Roll call.
I guess there's an echo. Hang on just a second. Did you hear that echo? Yeah. Yep, no echo. Okay, I think we're good now, sorry. Palermo.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Harding.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Switzerland, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought you were gonna say mission. So this month, we recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the 911 system in Omaha, Nebraska. And 911 plays a vital role in a complex public safety system for our community. And it's a critical component that helps ensure that fire and police can react to citizens' emergency needs with rapid response. Our 911 system has grown and evolved from its humble beginnings in the bowels of this building to a merger with Douglas County and a relocation to more modern and appropriate facility for its function. And so I've asked for a proclamation to be drafted to formally recognize 911's 50 years of service toward a community and hope to present that at an upcoming council meeting in the near future. And then one last note, this weekend when I was talking about 911 with my two daughters who were 17 and 14, they don't know life without 911. And they asked me a question that kind of made me pause and think is, when I was younger, how did you contact the fire and police? And I think maybe most people in this room, you'll be aging yourself if you admit to it, but you dialed zero and asked the operator to connect you. Or you dialed the police or fire directly. But so 911's 50th anniversary of service in Omaha is, I think, an important thing to recognize and will be issuing a proclamation down in the next couple of weeks worth. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in east of all the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today, whether in person or through the Zoom platform online, and whether you're tuning in on TV or through the live stream over the Internet. For those in attendance, as a courtesy to those who are presenting, please turn off or silence all electronic devices at this time.
Item six to eight can be considered together for Legend Trails located northwest of 222nd and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for Legend Trails. Item eight, a resolution to approve the Legend Trails subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items six, seven, and eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through eight are approved, seven to zero. Is there someone who want to make a motion to waive city council liquor rule six on items nine to 12?
Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Hank's 2.0 located at 3922 Ames Avenue, A is communication and support.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Pacific Springs Village located at 805 South 173rd Court, A is communication and support, B is a request from the applicant to postpone the application to the June 23, 2020 city council meeting.
Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item, or that motion is passed, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Aloft Omaha Exarban Village located at 6201 Center Street.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Public hearing will call for proponents, and I believe we have the applicant on Zoom. Mr. Young.
Yes, we're here to answer any questions you may have in regards to that liquor license. I have John Klimpel, who will also be the manager of the liquor license with me also.
Thank you. And would, Mr. Young, would you give us your full name and address?
Steven A. Young, 10311 South 177th Street, Omaha, 68136.
And the name of your manager that's with you?
John E. Klimpel, K-L-I-M-P-E-L. Address is 5930 South 114th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68526.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Melton. Motion passed, six to zero. Melton abstains. Item 12, an application to consider a Class K catering liquor license for the casual pint located at 8718 Countryside Plaza.
The public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 13 and 14 were held on June 2, 2020. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 15 through 26 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding any of these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, if you are a proponent or opponent, and your public testimony. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 27, a resolution to approve a professional services agreement with QTAC Rock effective upon its execution and expiring December 31, 2020, with professional fees not to exceed $100,000.
The public hearing was previously held. Mr. Festerson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was of the opinion we should delay this last week so that we could get more information about this particular contract, which is a lobbying contract that represents the city of Omaha in Washington and on federal issues. And it was my impression that Senator Carnes or maybe Marty Bealik would be here today. I think, here they come. Mr. Carnes or Senator Carnes, your distant time, if you want to come down and provide your name? Appreciate you being here. And my introduction was just observing the importance of having representation in Washington and particularly with so many issues being decided in quick fashion there as it applies to our interests with transportation funding and certainly the firefighter cancer registry act and the CARES Act funding where there's literally billions of dollars in play for municipalities and other entities across the city or across the country that are trying to recover from the impacts of COVID as well as many other issues. So I appreciate the documents you've forwarded to us and kind of summarized for us, but if you wanted to give a, just a quick summary of that work and what you're doing so we can let the public know?
Sure. David Carnes partnered with QTAC Rock, head of our Government Affairs Group, 1650 Foreman, Omaha, Nebraska. Approximately a year ago, well, a little over a year ago now, city council, I appreciate, approved a public professional services agreement. As I had mentioned at that time to the mayor's office, there were about 450 cities and counties that have registered lobbyists in Washington. There were none in Nebraska, and I felt that was something that needed to be at least considered because there's a lot of issues that are taking place in Washington that affect you folks and it'd be important for the city to have some input with its congressional delegation as well as other leaders in both the House and Senate as well as with the administration. So the agreement was approved and for the past, you know, 16 months, I guess, or so, we've been working with our government affairs people in our Washington office of QTAC Rock as well as the folks here in Omaha. And one of the first issues we were asked to pursue was the new five-year, $300 to $500 billion federal highway legislation that is reauthorized every five years. And we worked very closely with Bob Stube and the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency people to determine priorities for the city of Omaha. We have identified several of those priorities through these discussions and I shared those with, as an attachment to the memo that I prepared for the city of the items. A lot of it deals with funding, a lot of it deals with, on this highway legislation deals with removing restrictions, unnecessary regulatory constraints that, as Bob Stube pointed out, add sometimes over a year's worth of cost to a project that multiple agencies all have to approve the same thing. So we were successful in having some legislation included in the US Senate bill that involved some streamlining of the regulatory approval process such that if one agency approves something, then the other agencies just wouldn't have to review it completely but could just acknowledge and approve a prior agency's approval of a regulatory constraint. So one of the, that was one of the first items that legislation, the current five-year highway legislation expires at the end of this fiscal year, which is September 30. The House just introduced its 450-page bill last Wednesday, so we have a House and Senate bill that will be monitoring both those and working with the city officials to make sure that some of the priorities we've identified are included. In addition, I, and you mentioned Congress, I already elevated you here or demoted you, whichever it is, I'm not sure. Councilman, you mentioned about some of the work we've done with the police department, with the fire department. And most recently, when the CARES Act was passed, as you folks may or may not know, it was about 880 pages. It was signed into law Friday night by the president. We spent the weekend reading that legislation and we pointed out to, contacted the mayor and the chief of staff and talked to them first thing Monday morning about how Omaha was going to be affected by the CARES legislation. And a lot of interesting discussion about who was going to be the recipients in the state of Nebraska, obviously, the state of Nebraska was going to get 1.25 billion, less whatever money went to the Douglas County, which happened to be the only unit of local government that had over 500,000 population. And of course, as you know, as I informed the mayor at that time, nothing was going to be available legislatively to be directly received by the city of Omaha. So what we did is developed a plan to work with the county. And I know this is a surprise maybe to some of you, but there are certain people in the county that don't have as high regard for the city as far as sharing money. And so we worked, our law firm does a lot of work with the county. We do bond counsel work for the city as well as the county, so we are an honest broker. And we have an, I had an opportunity to educate each of the seven county commissioners on what the law required and how it was going to benefit Douglas County. And then we've been working in earnest with the county and the state to make sure that Omaha is treated fairly. So I mentioned just four or five of the items that are priority items that have been identified this past year, and we've worked closely with the Treasury Department to get proper interpretations and working with Mr. Curtis and some of the people in the mayor's office. We've identified what I believe are fair requests for the state and the county to consider. But at the end of the day, the law is very interesting. Any of you that deal with federal legislation, in this case, the federal government put the money out first and then said, over the next nine months, you folks are going to have to comply with the law, which hadn't been issued yet. So between now and the end of the year, the CEOs of the county, as well as the CEO of the state, which is the governor, and I guess they eventually decided that CEO of the county was going to be Claire Duda, those people had responsibility to make sure that all the money that was received was spent properly even though the law was still emerging. So there was some, a bit of consternation there. There's an audit that will take place at the end of the year, the Treasury will do for those units of government that receive funds. And that wouldn't necessarily be the city of Omaha if, as we expect, the city is able to participate with the county and the state as far as receiving funds. But there will be some evaluation that will be done by the state and the county to make sure that requests from the city, or any city in Douglas County, that is looking to receive funds from the county, $166 million, are properly interpreted to be eligible. But if they're not eligible, then as of the first of next year, those funds have to be returned. And there's a lot of interesting nuances which I don't need to, I'd be happy to get into each interview, talk to you individually about these, but every dollar has to be spent between now and December 30. And so if you have a, for example, if you are buying a new software system to help administer some of the funds and some of those dollars that deal with COVID-related expenses are on a time payment, for example, and are not paid until after the first of next year, those are no longer eligible COVID expenses. So there's some restrictions here that need to be carefully monitored. And as compared to what many of you probably are familiar with, generally, the government is the last, federal government is the last one to come through with the money. In this case, they're the first ones to come through the money and for good reason. We wanted to get the economy started again and everybody wanted to feel those, helped pay for some of the pain that was being experienced. And lastly, I might point out that there's proposed new legislation that would deal with one of the principal issues that affects the city of Omaha, and that is the loss of revenue. In the CARES Act, it talks about COVID-related expenses, and those are very narrowly defined to fit certain things that you can directly relate to the impact on your community because of the pandemic. But it doesn't allow you to, and it specifically says no reimbursement is allowed for loss of revenue. Now, in the city's case, of course, and working with the finance office and Mr. Curtis, they were able to put together a very lengthy, which I believe you folks have seen, description of the impact of lost revenue for the city. And that, of course, is incorporated into your budget. And so we are hoping that there'll be some new legislation that will be passed. There's a $3 trillion bill that was introduced in the House two weeks ago, which I don't think is going to go very far. But there's a $500 billion new piece of legislation called the SMART Act that was introduced in a bipartisan basis in the Senate. So even though we have the CARES Act funds that are available and they are, can be distributed immediately, once a process is developed, now the county has not worked out their process yet, nor has the state worked out its process yet. But there may be some changes in the rules that would allow not just COVID-related expenses to be reimbursed, but also loss of tax revenue. And in the Senate bill, it, as well as the House bill, it amends the CARES Act to change the eligible expenses from COVID-related expenses to include loss of revenue. So all I can say is, this is a very interesting time legislatively in Washington where people are trying to evaluate what can best get our country going again, and these funds have obviously made a big, big difference. But they may change some of the rules between now and the end of the year, and those should impact favorably on what would be eligible reimbursements for the city. So to make a long story short, they're a very complicated piece of legislation. The HEROES Act was 1,700 pages. The CARES Act was 882 pages. And unfortunately, that falls upon me to read those pieces of legislation, but we were able to brief the city immediately. And when I contacted each of the county commissioners, they were unaware of what they were going to be receiving. And so I briefed them on the role that we needed to play since the city is a large part of the county. And all, six of the seven commissioners, I reminded them, live in the city and they're citizens of the city of Omaha. So the response has been very good in talking to the commissioners. And I think the statements from the council members here, each of you, Mr. German in particular, I think, early on made some comments about the city being treated fairly by this unique federal legislation, I think, have helped make the case for the city to be treated fairly by the funds that are from the state as well as from the county. So those are some things that we're working with on every day. And again, the federal transportation highway legislation, which is a five-year bill, has a dramatic impact on money received for highways and roads and transit in the city of Omaha. And so we're working in large part to increase the funding and to make sure that the regulatory constraints that have cost the city a lot of money and all other cities the same thing with unnecessary regulations are eliminated.
So. Thank you for that summary. Obviously, there's a lot of work going on. And what has been remarkable during this time period is how fast things have moved. So I think it makes representation much more important, as you were noting. Maybe just two quick follow-ups. So regarding the CARES Act, I think you're correct. We are depending upon cooperation from the state and the county to get the city's large financial issues addressed in the context of that legislation, unless there is some amendment that allows for lost revenue that you mentioned. Do you care to handicap what the chances of that occurring might be?
Well, the nice thing so far is that the White House, as well as the leadership of the House and Senate, both the Republican and Democratic side have indicated that the cities and counties, and to a certain degree, some states need additional assistance, that the CARES Act really didn't deal with some of those lost revenue situations that are having dramatic impacts on their budgets. So it's nice to see, in what we have is a divided government in Washington, we have at least three branches, well, two of the branches of government agreeing that some additional legislation is necessary. Now, when we have record stock market results like we're seeing this morning and today, there's some reduction in the enthusiasm for putting another $500 or a trillion into the economy. But I believe there will be something that will be done, and I think it will allow lost revenue to be included in reimbursable expenses.
Great, thank you. And a whole other addition of issues too, I think, in the last day, over law enforcement that I'm sure we'll want to engage too in the process here as well. We talked about having more regular updates with the city council with all these things happening so quickly, and I would defer, I think, to the council president as the best way to do that, but my suggestion might be the law committee, and it sounds like you're willing to do that and agree that's a good idea?
No, I think that's great. In fact, in speaking with the chief of staff to the mayor's office, he felt that was a very good recommendation and a lot of things going on, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, but it's important for the leadership of the city, particularly the city council, to be aware of some of the opportunities that present themselves as well as getting honest interpretations of what the laws provide and what they don't provide. So I'm looking forward to doing that.
Great.
And I think there's a subcommittee process you have that would be a committee rather than in open session.
Yes, and we would look forward to helping the effort too.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So thank you for being here, and I would motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And Senator Carnes, I just wanted to say that you are a great benefit to our city. Your vast experience and your knowledge are not only benefiting our city monetarily, so you're definitely, you're paying for yourself, I think, tenfold with what you're doing, but you've gone above and beyond what I would even anticipate with your legal analysis of the federal regulation and based upon your experience that you have had. You are a great asset to us here in the city, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. And I can't think of anyone else actually in the city of Omaha that could probably do the job that you're doing based upon the people that you know and the knowledge that you have and how, you know, the federal law works and kind of how the government works out there, which is difficult to navigate, to say the least, at times. And so I just want you to know that I really support what you do. And I think Councilwoman Harding and I, who are not on the law committee, we're on the finance committee. And I think this is, this is so almost equally important, if not more important. We would appreciate it if you would come to the finance committee to brief us as well instead of just the law committee. I would, I would really appreciate it.
You extend an invitation, and we will be present. I appreciate your kind remarks. It's not the easiest place to understand how things work, particularly when you have social media that every night say one thing and then you turn to the next channel and they say something else. But I do have some good friends back there. I was there when I was young enough so that now the people that I serve with are now leading the place, at least at the US Senate, so that helps. There's 535 members of Congress, but there's about 10 people that really make all the decisions. So, but it's an honor to represent Nebraska way back when, and it's great to talk about the city of Omaha, because you do things the right way. And it's easy to have a, as those of you that are involved with the law practice, if you have a great client who listens to your advice, that makes your representation much easier. And I'm proud to say that I'm a citizen of Omaha. Our firm is headquartered here. We have about 600 lawyers nationwide, 18 offices, and so we're proud to be headquartered in Omaha and right across the street from the courthouse.
No, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for all your help. And way back when I was in law school, I think I got the Harold Rock Scholarship. So QTAC Rock has always been, I've always appreciated everything that you've done and then what you give back to the people in Omaha where you are. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'll say I'm glad we have the amount spelled out in the agreement because if Councilmember Melton thinks it's tenfold, then I'm glad we have it where we are. But don't think of that as an opportunity next time to increase. Thanks. But again, I'll just say too, I think it shows the importance of having representation in DC, fighting for us, for Omaha, to hopefully equally share or get our share of what's available as it relates to federal funds, and I appreciate your efforts in that regard. Councilmember Festerson brought up, or asked you to kind of lay odds on what might come out as it relates to revenue, lost revenue reimbursements. And I'll say that I was, I was going to ask about, what's the status of HR 662, which, or 6652, which I think Congressman Bacon and 10 others in a bipartisan way introduced on the House side? And I forget what, on the Senate side, what that one is, but obviously, some hybrid of that is going to come out of that, and hopefully cities like Omaha will be able to, without increasing the amount of money that's already been put out by CARES.
Right.
Just giving more flexibility to access those funds that are already, that have already been allocated.
So. Right. Councilman, you're exactly right as far as Congressman Bacon's legislation. It doesn't add any more money, but it just creates more flexibility. I believe that at least the attitude of Congress right now is that some additional money is necessary and as well as additional flexibility. So while I don't think Congressman Bacon, and I think he has six Republicans and six Democrats, at least in the original bipartisan bill that was filed about two and a half weeks, three weeks ago, I think a lot of the provisions of that are going to be incorporated into a larger piece of legislation. Obviously, if you looked at the bill, it's about two pages. It's very narrow. But I think in both the House and Senate bills, they incorporate what the congressman and his colleagues have introduced as far as flexibility. So I think that will be in the next piece of legislation, some additional flexibility. Whether they amend the CARES Act will depend on the timing in many ways of Congress. If they wait too late, a lot of the money will have been If they wait too late, a lot of the money will have been already distributed. And then you go back and change the rules will be somewhat problematic. But in that case, they would probably add some additional money. So I, to answer your specific question, I believe the provisions of Congressman Bacon's proposed legislation that you referenced will be incorporated into any next piece of legislation that deals with the COVID pandemic.
Thank you.
I would just, for those of you who are not familiar with the process and the place, the price may seem high by local standards, but it's a bargain when you know all the work that goes into the efforts that your firm is doing and you have personally. And the itemizations are replete with information that documents the efforts that you've undertaken in your firm on the city's behalf. So I see this as a value add and support it.
Great. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. No further lights. Yeah, we do. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 27 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 28, ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Section 36-2, to include a definition of motorized scooter, to add 36-146 to create the offense of motorized scooter operation violation is communication and support.
Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. We had some discussion on this last week, and I know we have a couple of items on our agenda now that do spell out the details. I think as we started to discuss this last time, it lacked a little bit of context as to how the enforcement ordinance, which is what number 28 is, relates really to what the program of work would be under a new pilot project, which are now items, I believe it's 54 and 55 here on supplemental agenda. So I think we all do still have a lot of questions about those that we can go through when we come to those agenda items. But as it applies to this item, for me, I think we're in an okay spot. And as we discussed last week, the enforcement ordinance needs to be in place prior to any pilot project continuing, so that we do have these definitions in code, and there is an enforcement mechanism for how violations could occur. And any ordinance such as this one takes 15 days to go into effect. We did have some conversation about the fine, the $100 fine, and is that the appropriate level? And there was some public hearing and commentary on that last week. But I think in talking to Matt Cousy, that I'm satisfied with that for now and do think we should have the expectation the rules be followed this time and that there be consequences if they aren't followed this time. So for me, I think number 28 can move forward, even if we have lots of additional questions about the supplemental agenda items here today. So I would go ahead and move approval of number 28.
I'm going to move an amendment.
That would be a substitute motion.
Or if Councilmember Melton would like to move an amendment, I can provide you that opportunity.
It's regarding the children to exempt the razors.
Yeah. Yeah, so why don't I remove that motion to make it easier and allow Councilmember Melton to introduce that amendment?
Your motion is withdrawn. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, and Mr. Cousy, could I just ask you to come up? And Mr. Cousy, I'd like to thank you for being here on your birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you. My mother would be so proud.
So, and I know after I asked you about the razors, you sent me some language. And I think the appropriate thing to do would just be to do a motion to amend the ordinance. And I just want to make sure that I have the language correctly. We will amend it, and we will have another, it would be L, is that how we would do it? And then we would add children under the age of 18 and wearing a helmet are exempt from the restrictions stated in subsections BDF or J3. And I think that that would probably exempt our kids who are riding their little razors, who we don't want in the street, would exempt them from this ordinance. Is that correct?
Matt Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department, that is correct. At last week's council meeting, at the conclusion of the public hearing, you asked me about coming up with an idea to deal with children under the age of 18 who are operating their own private scooters. Obviously, I can be corrected when the agreement comes up for discussion, but I, if memory serves, you can't use the spin or bird. I think that's, they don't allow children under 18 to operate those, so these would be for people's private ones. Councilmember Melton mentioned this last week. So I thought, I had a moment to think about, an idea. And I guess the compromise that I suggested was to exempt children under 18 from being prosecuted for being on the sidewalk, obviously being 18 and operating one, having a driver's license, and blocking vehicular driveways, the offset being that they would wear a helmet. The overall purpose of the scooter ordinance is not just to provide a level of consistency for enforcement, but also to have them safely operated. So I think the helmet trade-off is a good trade-off. And it had been an issue that was discussed last year, and it was also discussed in some early versions of the ordinance with the mayor's office.
Okay.
And I don't have a, I always prefer that the penalty be listed last, but to be honest with you, if you want to make that L, I really don't think it matters.
No, I actually, I agree with you. The penalty, I always like the penalty last, and you think that's what lawyers look for when they're looking through the ordinance, they're always looking to go to the end. So what I guess I would do is I would amend K to have children under the age of 18. This is my motion, President.
They're writing.
K will be children under the age of 18 and wearing a helmet are exempt from the restrictions stated in subsection BDF or J3. And then K will become L, as written.
Point of clarification, does this include motorized and non-motorized scooters in your motion? Or is it just for non-motorized?
Well, I think the kid, some of the kids' scooters have some kind of motor apparatus, and that's what I was trying to.
Is there a, is there a speed limit?
So.
Are you directing, I mean?
Oh, I'm asking.
Sorry, I think there already is a speed limit listed in the ordinance.
That's correct. Under Section 2 of the ordinance, it defines motorized scooters. It would only apply to motorized scooters, I guess self-propelled ones were included in this. And they're basically defined as ones that can operate at a speed of more than 15 miles per hour on a paved level surface.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Melton, on your motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to just ask a couple of questions to make sure we have this on the record. And I'll say more about it when we get to the supplemental agenda as well. But since this is an ordinance, it becomes effective 15 days after it's adopted.
Signed by the mayor.
Correct. 15 days after it's adopted on an ordinance. And adopted would be upon the mayor's signature? Or is it when it passes this body?
I believe when it passes this body, but I'm going to look at the attorney for final, after it's signed.
Okay. And I'll, it'll, I think it'll become more clear when we get to the supplemental agenda why I'm asking that. But just wanted to make sure we have that on the record. So if that were the case, if we were to pass this ordinance today, and assuming when documents are delivered to the mayor's office for signature, it's probably a day or so, and maybe it gets signed probably at the earliest on the 11th, which would be Thursday. So then the 15 days after that would then make this ordinance effective on June 26th, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just have a question. When we add an amendment, does that take us back to a public hearing?
No, it does not. Public hearing was held.
So can the public?
Any council members welcome to call on any member of the public attendance.
I just asked that for clarification. But since we are talking about it, just before we go on this, I'm just curious about the, again, to me, this adds additional cost. In this pilot program, did we, am I reading the information correctly? The balance was basically $20,000 in the hole on the pilot program?
Ken Smith, Public Works, parking and mobility manager, is here.
Ken Smith, Public Works, we did kind of create as best we could, tracked the expenses and revenues that came through that program, and that's what was shown in the report.
Okay. And I'm just, because, before I vote on it, I at least have to have some idea where the expenses will be. It says the program administration was $45,000. This is during the pilot.
Correct.
And we lost basically $20,000.
I would say, as part of our administration, put the things in place that we need to in order to regulate them, is putting the report together, gathering the data, and putting those things. It's probably things we had done regardless if we were gaining the revenue or not. I think as we move ahead, we're talking about different pricing programs, so we'll make sure we're at least net zero moving with the program forward.
So moving forward, you're telling me this scooter program, although the pilot did cost us, or there was a cost there apparently for $20,000 loss, in the future, you're saying this should break even?
The cost would have been there regardless if we had tracked it or not or been there. We had to regulate or create regulations regardless and then build to enforce those regulations. But moving forward, yes, we look to make sure we're at net zero, and we're looking at different pricing mechanisms within this agreement.
But the administration will not be quite that high, is what you're telling me?
I, no, don't plan to.
So when this comes up again in the future, I can anticipate that we will at least break even or make a profit?
Certainly. Break even, yes. Definitely.
Okay. When we first started, I thought that this program is sold on us, this would be basically a little bit of a moneymaker.
I think it's a program where we have to kind of tweak as we go along. Scooters really only have been existence since 2019, or, I'm sorry, 2018 on the coast. Then 19 was the first year here. So there's a lot of tweaking that's been done here. We're one of three cities that's changing parking, or pricing to a parking program versus per scooter or per ride fee. And it's something where we've done estimates based on last year's data where we probably will gain additional revenue in this case.
Okay. A number of cities have done this for a while. Has it been a profit in those cities or a break even or?
Definitely a break even.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls. I would add just a couple of things. I'm glad to see, Mr. Cousy, that you've taken the time and effort to come up with safety regulations that no doubt will serve to improve the more orderly and safe use of scooters in our city. However, it's my personal view that while some of the major concerns that I heard about from my constituents, and not just my constituents, but from people well beyond the boundaries of District 3, the downtown and midtown that I represent, which is where most of the scooters are found in use, was that the concerns of riders without helmets. And, you know, you didn't, you had to be, you know, tone deaf if you didn't hear the reports or see the reports from local emergency room physicians, they're talking about head trauma, particularly among the less experienced riders. And so to me, having an enforcement mechanism that doesn't call for use of, or require the use of helmets, to me, is just too dangerous of a situation. Omaha streets are filled with challenges, shall we say, in terms of their conditions, whether it be in rocks and potholes and bumps and in traffic. It's a dangerous place out there, and to me, it doesn't make sense that we not require the use of helmets. And so I'm glad to see there's progress here. But once this amendment is voted on, assuming it is, I intend to move to amend to require the use of helmets and bring that within the fine structure established in this ordinance proposed by the city prosecutor. We have a motion on the amendment, and we have a second? Councilmember Melton?
I was just, before we voted on your motion, I wanted to see if there was anyone here from.
Your motion's priority.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was anyone here from Spin or to Speak.
There is.
Okay.
They're participating online. We have Frank Speek from Spin and Fong Bui from Spin and Blanca LaBour from Bird.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ms. B, if I, or Mr. B, if I mispronounced your name. I apologize for that. Who did you wish to call on? Bird or Spin?
Well, we can go ahead and vote on mine. I just didn't see anyone, I was looking.
They're online.
So that's all I was asking. So we can go ahead and vote on this, and then we can hear from them on the helmet issue.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson, did you wish to?
I'm okay with that procedure, too.
Okay. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Mr. Cousy, would you approach the mic, please? In terms of my proposed amendment, where would you plug that in?
Matt Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department. Well, somewhere before the new, Eliza's going to kill me, before the new K and the new L. So I don't know if you want to re-letter K and re-letter L.
Should we ask the parliamentarian?
I glanced at her, and she's nodding her head approvingly towards me.
Yes.
Yes.
So what do you propose? My amendment will be the new K?
And then K, the new K becomes L, and the old L becomes M. Thank you.
Do you need any additional wording? Okay, they're good. I'd appreciate a second.
Can you repeat your?
Yeah, the new K requires the use of a helmet while using a scooter upon the public right-of-way. And it ties into the existing fine structure. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think this is a good conversation to have, and I was holding it for the following items, but I think you're probably right. It's best maybe addressed on this item, given that it deals with potential enforcement issues. So I guess my question overall, probably to Mr. Cousy, but then also to the company representatives, would be, obviously, this was a topic of conversation. Why, you know, why was it not included, or what decision informs not including it in the original ordinance here? And then maybe for the companies, how do they interpret this potential amendment? Having viewed systems in other cities, I don't know that I've ever seen helmets used. So I don't know if it's a practical concern, or if it's just hasn't worked out before, or maybe it's worked out well some places. I'd just like to know that background.
Matt Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department, the helmet issue was discussed in the early days of this ordinance. As I indicated last week, ordinances on scooters run the gamut. You have, I think, my last week's example was you have Miami, Florida, which I don't understand why any scooter company would operate there with their ordinance, very strict rules about where you can even put the scooters when you're done with them. And then you have more liberal cities. And then you have more liberal cities in terms of how they deal with the scooters. So, it's, the helmet issue runs the gamut. They apply there sometimes, some places don't require them at all. I, I don't really recall why the helmet thing wasn't discussed, or wasn't incorporated into the ordinance. I know it was discussed. I think one of the concerns that was addressed at one of these meetings was mandating people to have helmets, whether it's a privately owned scooter that you have or your child has and operates requiring you to wear a helmet. I think there's also some discussion about the ride-sharing companies basically forcing them in some way to provide helmets to their consumers. I think that was one of the issues that was discussed. That was, that's my recollection from conversations about it.
Okay. And maybe from the company representatives, too, if I could hear their perspective on it?
Yeah, which do you, call on first, Spin or Bird?
Why don't we say Bird? We'll go alphabetically.
Okay. Would the clerk please activate Blanca LaBord, who's by phone? Welcome, Blanca.
Hi. My name is Blanca LaBord. I'm with Bird Rides. Thank you very much for the question. Of course, the safety of our riders is our utmost and top priority, and we do have several programs. We encourage helmet use. Every single scooter encourages that helmet use. In addition, we, we have helmet giveaways. Anyone that is a rider can order a free helmet from our app. We also host, and will be hosting in Omaha, helmet giveaways, community events that show people how to ride and provide them with that safety equipment. We also have a safety marketplace that is available so that people can get discounted, discounted prices on some safety products. And of course, this is accompanied by all the in-app messaging and rider education that we do. We also recently implemented a new feature that is called warm-up mode for people that are not as experienced in riding scooters. They can choose to begin their ride in warm-up mode, and that is going to take them through some additional safety features, and it's also going to limit their acceleration for a period of time. Another very popular feature that we have recently implemented to encourage helmet use is called the Helmet Selfie. So, riders, once their ride has ended and they've taken their end-of-ride photo showing that they have properly parked their scooter, they are then encouraged to take a picture of themselves wearing their helmet. And if they do that, they, they will get incentives like free rides and additional discounts. They can also post that picture of themselves riding with their helmet onto social media in order to encourage and help promote broader adoption of the use of helmets. And if they, if they post it on social media and they include the hashtag #BirdHelmetSelfie, we also enter them into a promotional offer, promotional giveaways, et cetera, in order to further encourage that use.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, it sounds like you encourage it, and you even do provide some free helmets. The question, though, is, you know, should they be required? Do you have an opinion on that, or do you serve any other markets that do require them?
Of course, it is up to the City of Omaha and this council to decide what, what you want the rules to be in your city. In the markets that I cover, I do not have any markets that require helmets, and there's multiple reasons for that. Some people believe that for bicycles and for helmet, and for scooters, that helmet use does not necessarily impact safety, that they rather focus on the concept of safety in numbers, meaning the more people are, that are riding, and the more infrastructure is available for people on bikes and on, on scooters, the safer it will be. And in others, in other places, it really is a matter of state law and whether such helmet use can be required for adults.
And my last question for you, then I'll pose the same two questions to the other representative, is, my impression is a lot of riders and ridership is a bit whimsical, and that's part of what the appeal is, and they aren't necessarily planned rides, but you ride something when you're out and about, or with your friends, or, you know, whenever you're doing it for entertainment, and you may not be carrying a helmet. Is that your observation, too?
She was muted.
Um, yes, not everybody carries a helmet with them, that is correct. There are some new models of helmets that are being developed that are collapsible, perhaps even disposable, and we're always working with helmet manufacturers and other developers in order to get the best technology and be able to provide that as an option for our riders.
Okay. Thank you. And I suppose the other representative now, same, same two questions.
We have Spin.
An opinion on requiring or not requiring helmets, and do you serve any other markets that do that?
Hi, thank you so much for having us today, and thank you for your leadership during this extra any time. To answer your question, safety is of-
Ma'am, if I could interrupt you, we need your name and address first, and your company, for the record.
Yes, my name is Fong Bui, and I'm representing Spin today.
You may proceed.
To answer your question, we do not require helmets in Omaha, but we do have a distribution strategy in place, so similar to Bird, we provide free helmets upon request to our riders. And for folks who want to have access to foldable helmets that are more portable, we also offer a 30% discount through our partnership with Overraid.
Okay.
And then additionally, we also have an education program in place to encourage folks to use helmets in addition to safe riding practices.
And do you have, do you have an opinion about including it or not including it as a mandatory aspect of this ordinance?
Yes. In other markets that I'm working on, we don't have any that require helmets. I think some of the concern regarding that is, if it is required, it could deter people from, or a new user from trying out a personal mobility device and sticking with the traditional car route. So, that would be a concern, but, you know, we're happy to work with the city on, you know, what works best for Omaha.
Okay. Thank you. I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. There's no further lights. Roll call.
Oh, and it's no, right?
I did the motion, Council Vice President Palermo did the second. Did you wish to speak again? Your lights came back on.
Well, yeah, I got, Councilman Harding just confirmed with Mr. Kratz that there is no law for helmets on bicycles, so that was, I kind of compared these scooters more to bicycles than I do motorcycle, which is what helmets are required for. So, that's, that's how I made my decision and deciphered which, which way I was gonna go on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Any, no further lights? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
No.
Gray.
Let me step out.
Harding.
No.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion fails, three to three.
We have a amended ordinance as amended by the motion made by Councilmember Melton. Is there a motion as amended by the Melton amendment?
Will the protocol amended?
Sir? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Oh, he stepped out.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
No.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion is approved, four to two. Item 29, an ordinance to add Section 20-13 to the Omaha Municipal Code to create the offense of hate intimidation, A is communication and support, B is communication and opposition.
Is there a motion?
Sir?
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 30, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts lots, and pieces of real estate to cover the cost of clearing snow and ice from sidewalks and sidewalk snow removal district number 2020-01.
Public hearing on item 30 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Sean Gibson, address is 20814 Clark Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022, representing City of Omaha, Public Works Construction, sidewalk manager.
Happy to answer.
Here for questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 31 to 33, ordinances to acquire private property for the Papillion Creek North 210 project, constructing the sanitary sewer crossing replacement at I-680 in Spalding Plaza, and constructing 156th Street, Pacific Street, Twycliff Drive.
The public hearing on items 31, 32, and 33 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 34, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code to change requirements for notification of adjacent residences and businesses relating to special event permits.
Public hearing on item 34 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 35, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of $182,868 to provide funding for law enforcement equipment, prosecutor and corrections programs, and technology improvements and training.
The public hearing on item 35 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm getting an echo here, and I would like to quickly point out that I can hear most of you, but I can't hear Chris and some of the others that were up here. So, with all the money that we spent, we maybe adjust microphones or get new microphones. I'd also like to point out that in relation to this, that with all the discussion going on recently nationally with replacing the police, maybe we should vote, not voting on some of these bills, because obviously, groups around the country and locally are gonna tell us they need the money for their 501(c)(3) rather than our police needing the money. And they want to disband the police department and use that money for other purposes. So, maybe you should tighten your belts today and vote against this ordinance, and the last two that we just heard about recently, because that money should be earmarked for our community partners and our national partners that want an agenda for criminal justice, mental health, all kinds of things out there, folks, that other people want to make money at. Let's take it from the police and give it to them, and we'll have a better society. The way these things are worded, it scares the hell out of me. We are usurping the idea of republicanism, that the federal government has certain powers, the rest of it is reserved to you people. Let's don't keep letting the federal government have more, or let outside groups such as George Soros and Black Lives Matters tell us how to run your police department and your, and your money. It's not just your money, it's mine, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I had called for proponents, but I believe we'll classify that as an opponent. Are there any other people wish to testify as a proponent? Now, are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 36, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Silverstone Group, Inc., for a group benefit consulting services for a period of March 1, 2020, to February 28, 2023.
The public hearing on item 36 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Deb Sanders, City HR Director.
Thank you.
It's Stephanie. Stephanie Younger with Silverstone Group, a hub international company, 11516 Miracle Hills Drive, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
We'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 37, Arrow Towing Appeals Rejection of Their Bid from April 22, 2020, for the Towing Services for OPD Accident and Violation Project.
Would the appellant, Arrow Towing, please come forward, give us your name, address, and the basis for your appeal?
My name is Will Bierman, 10250 Regency Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here with the owner and operator of Arrow Towing, Mr. Brad Aerosmith, and he'd be happy to answer any questions after I'm done addressing the council. Thank you all for hearing this appeal. We're, our goal with this appeal is not to point fingers at anyone or suggest that there was anything illegal or improper about the city's process here. We would just like to call the council's attention to the way this process was handled and ask that they reconsider the rejection of this bid and actually award the bid to Arrow Towing. Arrow Towing has operated in the Omaha area for the last 19 years. It's specifically served the City of Omaha under this particular OPD towing contract for the last 12 years, in addition to another city maintenance contract for the last 12 years. The brief timeline here is that throughout the spring, Arrow Towing and, I believe, only one other bidding contractor participated in the city's bidding process. On May 6, Arrow Towing received a notification that indicated that the city intended to give it, order the bid. Twenty-odd days later, March 29, or, excuse me, May 29, Arrow Towing received a notification of an intent to reject the bid. And so, my understanding from, from talking with various folks over the last week is that that, in some instances, is commonplace and has happened before, and is perhaps, doesn't break any of the rules here, but I would like to point out to the council, it does put Arrow Towing in a difficult position, asking them to rebid when they were one of only two contractors that bid during the first process. The pricing information put forward in the first process is now public and available for any future bidding. Going forward, you can, your imagination can kind of run wild what, what competitors might do with that pricing information if we simply turn around and rebid sort of on exactly the same facts. And my understanding from some investigation into the other contractor here is that Arrow Towing is in fact the only qualified contractor, and expects to be the only qualified contractor for any successive rounds of bidding. So, so, in addition to just some frustration with how the process was handled up to this point, going forward, this is just the, the right contractor for the city. Arrow Towing, it came in as the lowest bid, in addition to being the only qualified bid. Talking to Mr. Brad Aerosmith here, preparing for this hearing, you can tell he really appreciates being the contractor for, for this particular contract with the city. He described the work as really difficult and challenging, but really rewarding. It is really a unseen service that he's able to provide to the citizens of Omaha here, and he hopes to participate in the future with whatever successive rounds of bidding are required here, but hopes that the council can certainly have a, an eye to what sort of occurred during the spring and how this is the, the right contractor going forward. But by our calculation, there's a classification within the bidding system here called Class A vehicles. I didn't have any idea what Class A vehicles was until recently, but it's, it's the, your average tow, the tow that you're gonna get under these specifications 95% of the time. And under that tow, Arrow Towing is $5 cheaper per tow than the next closest bid. You know, this particular contract is a six-year contract, so, quick math shows some savings to the city in the neighborhood of $360,000. And going through the process of rebidding this with either qualified or unqualified competitors, now having access to that pricing information puts Arrow Towing in a tough position. And, and so, as we ask for this, ask the council to consider this, I will just reiterate that Arrow Towing wishes to be the contractor going forward and isn't here to- to be the contractor going forward and isn't here to to ruffle any feathers or upset anyone or accuse anyone of doing anything wrong. But I do feel it's important to point out the frustration with issuing and an intent to issue the contract here and then going back on that and asking for an additional bidding process. So I'm happy to answer any questions and.
Thank you, Mr. Bierman. I would just let you know that we certainly understand, and I think the city and the police department and the law division understands your frustration. But assure us that this bid was like the others that it puts out when it said it reserved the right to reject all the bids. And it's our understanding from the briefing we received this morning at the public meeting of the pre-council agenda that they've decided to change the way they're going to bid it. The methodology is going to change. And so this is what the police department really wants to do and how they want to move forward doing it. The law department understands your position, and they explained that it's one of the challenges of contracting with a municipality when they reserve the right to reject. And in this case, the police department has expressed their reasons for making a change in methodology. And so our hands are tied in that regard because even if we were to award the appeal, they still wouldn't issue the contract because we can't force them to do that. So I appreciate you airing your frustration today. And if there's anything you wanted to add, Mr. Aerosmith, please feel free to do so. You can come up, give us your name and address.
Brad Aerosmith, thirty-one twelve South Sixty-seventh. And like we, like the gentleman said, we started working on this process a year ago as Captain Reyes of the Omaha Police Department, so we wouldn't be here today. And we've been doing bid contracts for cities for twenty years. We were here ten years ago, eleven years ago. You know, we offered all the insights so this kind of problem wouldn't happen. And in my also frustration, they continue, the city continued purchasing, let unqualified bidders do the bid. You know, in my opinion, they should be able to bid, anybody could bid, but if they're not qualified, that bid should be discontinued at the time of, after the bid is read or whatnot. So my other frustration is we, if you guys read my email that we sent each council member, Captain Reyes came to our office, we had a nice meeting over any concerns that might arose, and we talked about it, had a nice conversation toward the facilities. And then a day before, it was supposed to be on your agenda for last week, now they come up with there's issues on the bid specs. So I agree, if they had issues with the bid specs, they should have said that before then intend to award, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Bierman?
Yes, Will Bierman. I'll just add that that legal explanation certainly makes sense, and Arrow Towing accepts that as a more than clear explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Good luck on the next one.
Items fifty-four and fifty-five can be considered together, resolutions to approve the implementation of Dockless Shared Scooter operating agreements with Spin and Bird.
The public hearing on item fifty-four and fifty-five will be held together. At this time, we'll call for proponents. And we have, Mr. Smith, do you wish to say anything before I call on Bird and Spin?
So what you have before you is agreements have kind of evolved from since last year. We went through a pilot one program, and through that, we did learn a lot through the process, and we wrote a report basing a lot of things we saw and made recommendations. Those recommendations went into an RFP, and that RFP is part of that process we see with the agreements today. So if there are any other questions regarding that, we feel like we've tweaked it enough to the point where we can do a second pilot and see if this works to alleviate some of the concerns or issues that are out there, and hopefully we can move on from there.
Thank you. Let's call on Bird first. Blanca LaBorde. Do you have any public testimony you wish to add?
Thank you very much. Thanks to the council and thanks to the city staff for the opportunity to be able to serve the people of Omaha in the future through micromobility. We believe that we are going to be a true asset and we look forward to our partnership.
Thank you. Let's now move to Ms. Bowie from Spin.
Hi, thank you so much again. And Spin also values our relationship with the City of Omaha and the community here, and are committed to working with the city to ensure that our program and our participation is successful this upcoming year.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents in attendance who wish to be heard? Are there any opponents that wish to be heard? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at pre-council today, when we were discussing this, I mentioned I had kind of two issues that concerned me on these two resolutions. The first being that the operating statements associated with the materials of this resolution were presented to us just yesterday. And I don't think it's we as a body are doing our constituents and the citizens of Omaha due justice if we're not giving the proper due diligence and examination of the information that we're being asked to pass. Just kind of hearken back to last year when going through a similar exercise, and one of the companies represented to us some inaccurate statements, or at least inaccurate in the sense that what we were led to believe all along as related to, in this particular case, geofencing was not what we were led to believe. And I felt that we probably passed that without checking ourselves and probably laying that over at that time and making sure we had the right answers to that. So again, I think we owe it to our constituents and the citizens of Omaha to make sure that we fully understand what we are looking at passing. And so that was the one issue that I mentioned was of concern of me this morning. The other one is, as it relates, and I talked a little bit about this when we were discussing the ordinance earlier, that being ordinance four two two four zero, which was basically the definition of the scooter. And I don't think we would want to pass these resolutions and have the scooter companies then be able to deploy and not have the ordinance that defined what the scooter was not take effect until, you know, ten or twelve days after the resolution that allowed them to deploy. So I'm going to ask for a layover today for at least a week, but I'll also say that, so that I'm not catching anyone, and so no one accuses me of trying to pull a fast one, is that I'll probably offer up an amendment at that time that also says that those resolutions, if they are passed next week, would not become effective until the ordinance four two two four zero is enforceable. And that may vary by, as I think we talked about with the clerk, she mentioned that it could be something like June twenty-sixth, depending on when documents are delivered to the mayor, when they're signed, and when they're returned. So my amendment to this, as I said, will include a flexible date, or at least it will be tied to when the ordinance is actually enforceable before the resolutions can be in place. Those were two of those items. I talked with Don Wesley, who's a representative of Spin earlier today. I told him of this as well. I think he understood that. The one thing I'm going to jump in that's kind of unrelated to all this is that when I heard the two companies talking about the foldable or collapsible helmets, I did a quick search online, and the safety of that equipment has evolved tremendously, and it's very portable. And so I would like to see both companies take further action and maybe encouraging the use of helmets and foldable helmets. But so that's, those are my comments on that. And again, I'll, I'm going to ask for at least a one-week layover.
There's a motion.
I'll second.
There's a second. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I am supportive of a second pilot project. I think the data shows they were popular amongst riders, and I think it does add an element of fun and alternative transit to a city that has been welcomed in Omaha and you often see in larger cities. And in my area, it's primarily Benson. Otherwise, it's primarily been downtown or Exarvan Village, I think, as the study indicates. I do agree, though, it's important that we take the opportunity to address some of these items of concern and really focus in on the details of these agreements, and they were just provided to us in the last few days. So I don't have a problem with the layover either. But I thought as long as we have the company representatives here and also department representatives in the law department, that it's worthwhile to start walking through some of those today as we continue to work on them into next week. So I think either Ken or Ms. Taylor would you come down and entertain a few questions. And what those questions are going to be are, you know, what have we done in this round that we learned from in the first round to tighten up things around rider safety, proof of age, how they can handle clutter concerns, and certainly the geofencing issue and where they'll be allowed to be or not be?
Ken Smith, Public Works. Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, we've kind of redid the pricing scheme to switch from a rider, per ride or per scooter fee that we did last year to a parking session fee. So we've geofenced the city down into green, yellow, red zones, which basically is kind of outcome-based technology. It allows us to kind of quickly identify where those scooters are landing. If it's in a green area, we're not charging them at all. That's going to be next year transit stations, your orbit stations, parking garages, to make sure we're making those connections for the first last miles. And then we have a blue zone, which basically is most of the city that we're looking at doing. There is a fee after an hour of that scooter sitting there, and it starts charging the scooter company. And then there's obviously the red zones where we looked at, some of the campuses, university campuses, as well as down by the arena convention center. Those are the red zones, and they're automatically fined. And so that allows the scooter company to, we would leverage that onto the scooter company, then they would go after the rider for leaving that scooter in that area. The reason we did this is that we noticed a correlation between complaints to the mayor's office and the number of scooters that were not being ridden at the time. It seemed there was an issue with fleet management in that aspect. So I think this will kind of help manage the fleets and make sure we're getting the right numbers out there on the streets for operations.
And is that, we described those zones, I don't know if you have a visual you can show us or not, but is that truly, so you're describing a fine system, but is it truly geofenced as in the scooter won't work in those areas or it slows down like it does in some other cities?
So this is the downtown area that we're looking at. As you can see, the red zones there. We have the old market and along the convention arena area, those high pedestrian areas. Thank you. And then you can also recognize the Creighton campus there as well within their pedestrian mall area. So we've limited the access. We worked with both universities on figuring out spots. You can actually, if you zoom, you can kind of see the, at the Creighton campus, they are looking at some, a couple locations where it could park scooters or they could be deployed that day or be dropped off by students during the, when they're done, finished using them.
So in what areas can you not use scooters?
The scooter could always be ridden through those areas, from my understanding. I'll have the representatives answer that they cannot be parked there and will be automatically fined. We didn't have that automatic fine to the system last year. This is something, if it gets there and it gets left there, it's going to be, the fine will put in place, the fee that's associated with that. We can slow the scooters down. We're asking both vendors to provide us the scooters so we can test the zones and make sure they're working. And we've talked about a different, a couple of areas where they could be slowed down to basically, you almost have to push it in order to get it to even go. So it's going to make it to the point where it's not even enjoyable to ride that scooter in that location. And that'd basically be like the red zones and those other areas such as that.
I have experience of that personally, and I think that does work. And Councilman Harding was correct, and last year, that was not at all clear in our discussions over this. So I want to make sure I do have it clear this time. But for me, it's still a bit unclear in what you're describing. So we haven't decided if that's going to be something we do, slow the scooters down in areas where they're not supposed to be or where we need them to be slower?
They will be geofenced in those areas from a parking standpoint, and we haven't talked about slowing them down. This is really based just a parking situation. If they get left there, they're going to be be subject to that fee structure.
So right now, in what would be before us today, there's a fine system if you go in those areas and if you leave them there, which to me is more of a clutter issue, but that's how you see you're discouraging that as opposed to slowing them down?
Yes, yes.
And are we opposed to slowing them down, or why is that not included this time?
I guess we're still working on the areas that we need to find, those slowdown areas. Right now, there's nothing necessarily out there that we're looking at from a slowdown point. We can certainly, as things evolve, kind of figure out where do we need to kind of make sure we're, if it goes, right now, it cannot go on the pedestrian bridge, the Bob Carey Bridge. And so there's really no reason to slow it down there. We're not allowing that to go out there from a parking standpoint.
They could go out there, but if they left them there, they'd be fined?
Correct, yes.
And is it your experience from the data or from the first pilot project, that's a more effective approach?
Yes, it is. From a standpoint of when, my knowledge of this, and I'll allow the representatives to talk about it more, is when they go into that red zone, there'll be indicators on there, their phone will be beeping, they'll get a message that they're in that area.
Okay. So I can, you know, this is new to us, so I think it is wise that we're laying this over for further conversation, but I can see how that might handle the clutter issue. I'm not sure how that really handles, though, geofencing or preventing someone from going where we might not want them to be, like the bridge. But let's move on for now. Talk about proof of age, too. That was something that happened that was also not included originally, but we did establish kind of on the fly in that first pilot project. That obviously is required in the ordinance that we just passed, that one must be eighteen and show the proof of age or else be subject to a pretty serious fine, right?
Correct. As part of the process, about midway through last year, we did have, you had to scan your driver's license into the system in order to get the scooter to activate. So as part of the contract in order to move ahead, and both that is in the agreements this year.
And in fact, you couldn't even get one unless you showed that proof, right? It wouldn't work for you.
Correct. And though, from what I know of it, I'm not sure which one, they said they would do spot checks once in a while. So every once in a while, you may have to scan your driver's license back in again.
In case somebody runs one and gives it to a friend or something?
Yes, yes.
And then talk about rider safety, you know, where they can go and where they can't. Has anything changed along those lines?
Not at this point. We are continuing to work with the convention visitors, or I'm sorry, MECA regarding putting something in those high pedestrian areas. The universities don't want to see it in their pedestrian mall areas as well. So any place we have those, we're working on signage or possibly painting something on a sidewalk that says no scooter zones. We're also looking at establishing some, what they call a hub station where scooters can be parked there. So maybe they're right at that location before they get to the high pedestrian areas where we say no scooters beyond this point, and there's a station there. We didn't make those stations part of this agreement. It's something we're going to continue to work on with the companies.
Okay. So still no sidewalks, only on streets that are thirty-five miles an hour or less?
Correct.
And you're thinking the enforcement aspect of what we're doing would be enhanced to make.
Yeah.
To improve that this time?
I think the parking element is, it's one, it's both positive and negative. It's one, they're everywhere, so you can go out and jump on one and not have to worry about it. But that's also the negative, too, is that they're everywhere and. But that's also the negative too, is that they're everywhere and they can sometimes clutter the sidewalk if they're not parked properly.
And do you have an opinion about the complaint lines? So in the first pilot project and I think in this one as well, both companies are required to provide a complaint line for anyone that observes maybe illegal behavior or a scooter that shouldn't be where it is or has been left somewhere. Was that an effective tool and did that work well from the city's perspective?
Yes, it did. I think, again, this is a fairly new process, the scooters. It's a new product. I think it's still evolving. I don't think anyone, as Matt alluded to, there's just a gamut of, as far as regulation. I think moving this to a different parking type fee situation is a better way to manage these fleets and make sure we don't have too many scooters on the street and the ones that are out there are actually being used. So I think the process is going to keep moving ahead and evolving and it's going to take time to kind of figure out where we land with this. I don't think any, from what I know from my peers across other cities have really, nobody's really kind of figured this out and got their hands, you know, completely wrapped around it.
And I believe I saw it's a maximum of 750 scooters?
Yes.
Per company?
Yes.
Is that the same maximum as the first pilot?
Yes, it is. Same numbers.
Okay. And then maybe the last thing I'll ask for now is that given the times we're living in, there's also a sanitary concern and I think a new requirement along those lines that each scooter be cleansed after every ride, or not after every ride, but after every day. Is that correct?
We did ask for that in the agreements and I'll let the representatives tell you more about their cleaning procedures.
Okay. Well, it seems to me we do have some more work to do on this and especially as it applies to where they can be and can't be, or at least talk some more about the system you're describing, which is more of a park and fee approach than really a geofence approach. But I'm going to yield the floor for now, but first I'll ask the representatives from Bird and Spin if they want to add anything to the line of question I was just going through. And we'll start with Bird, since B is before S.
Ms. LaBord.
Hi, yes. Blanca LaBord from Bird. Thank you very much for the questions and we look forward to continuing to work with the city of Omaha in order to impose and enforce those no-ride and no-park zones. Indeed, the geofencing does continue to evolve, but it is not a perfect, a perfect system. We are limited by federal government, of course, in what we can do, but we don't see any concerns or problems with implementing those zones as they have been set up in the RFP and to continue to work also collaboratively with the city as the program progresses to see if there are any trouble spots or if there's anything we need to do to refine, refine the process.
And you want to address the sanitary issue too, since he kind of referred that to you, how you'll handle that?
Yes, so of course, as I mentioned earlier, the safety of our riders and of our team is our top priority and we do have a system in place and a process in place now during COVID where we sanitize our vehicles each time they are in our custody as well as throughout the day as they are in the right of way. In addition, we are providing messaging to our riders in app and via email, just reminding them to follow safety, health guidelines generally, washing their hands, not touching their face and, you know, using hand sanitizer when necessary. And to, of course, maintain social distance as they're riding. You know, scooters are naturally socially distant, which is why we believe they're going to be a great tool for the people of Omaha during this, during this time.
And how are you doing that when they're in your custody? Are you actually wiping them down with, you know, Clorox wipes or what are you, what are you doing?
Yes, we have a cleaning solution and I'm happy to send you the process that we use along with the graphics that we've trained our team and, you know, they need to also at the same time be wearing masks and gloves and it's a full sanitization from handlebars to throttle to the, to the bell, the neck, et cetera.
Okay. Maybe last question, then I'll ask the same questions of Spin. Are you of the same opinion that sort of the park and fee approach is more effective in your experience than the geofence approach as to where ridership is encouraged and discouraged as well as clutter?
Well, every community is different and the way people ride and the habits are different. Certainly, this method is going to allow us to incentivize and disincentivize people from parking as well as actively prohibiting parking in certain areas, right? So if there is, the fees do encourage certain types of operations, but there are also geofences that are included in this, in this process, especially in those red zones where parking is not allowed. People will not be allowed to end their rides in that, in that zone.
Describe that. So how are they, how are they not able to do that? You're describing they would be fined if they do that, right?
Yes, we could, they could be fined. So a couple of different things. One, it's going to be in the app. When you go to end your ride, the areas are going to be marked in red in the app. It's going to say you cannot end your ride here. Please, when you go to park, it's going to say please move your scooter to another location in order to end your ride. So if they go ahead and end their ride there, we could, we could fine them. We could also set it up so that they physically cannot end their ride. So that is a geofence. However, I think that the way we have begun to implement this or the way we're discussing it with the city, you know, there's lots of unintended consequences sometimes when you put in geofences. For example, you might tell a rider, you're not, you might prohibit them from being able to physically end their ride in the location. And if you do that, they might just drop their scooter, right? They might just leave it there and not care of it. They couldn't end their ride. And so sometimes we do, do the, that might work or we might be able to use that stick of a fine in order to prevent the riding, the ride ending from, in that location.
Okay. All right, I'll move on now to, to the Spin representative if she wants to answer those questions too.
Yes, thank you for the question regarding geofencing. We can ensure implementation of geofencing and determine these zones before deployment. And using the references that we had listed in our proposal, I think many city partners can vouch that we are the most cooperative partner in the industry when it comes to geofencing compliance. And we'll make sure and work with the Department of Parking and Mobility to figure out the appropriate zones. And then regarding COVID-19, I think one of the unique advantage for Spin is that we employ exclusively W-2 employees. So our training and reminders as well as guidelines are standardized for our employees and they have every incentive to, you know, follow with those guidelines. We, what wasn't mentioned earlier, we also provide the necessary PPE for our staff as well as disinfecting supplies in addition to, you know, sanitizing the scooters before they come into the warehouse. As folks are around the city and rebalancing scooters, they also have supplies to wipe down and sanitize these devices throughout the day as well. And then in regards to addressing improper parking and clutter, we are a leader in installing Spin hubs. Essentially, it's our solution to encourage users to park in designated zones and we are already working with some local partners on setting this up. We're happy to answer any follow-up questions regarding geofencing, cleaning or improper parking.
Okay. I appreciate those responses for now and I'll yield the floor to some other council members. It does seem to me though that, I know it's inherently a little bit difficult to regulate these things, that's kind of the nature of them and that's kind of how they work, but it does seem like there's an awful lot of mayes and coulds in these statements and the intention was that this would be starting next week. So I do think we have some more, more conversation to be had. So with that, I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Palermo, Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So scooters, here we are again. Obviously, parking and mobility has viewed this as a second time of bringing back the pilot. If you look at all the departments who are involved to get us to this place we're at now, Public Works, Law, Planning, Parks, obviously the police who gave warnings or wrote citations, the fire department who maybe went out when somebody got hurt. I mean, these are a lot of resources from the city that are being used for a program that we're losing money on, if we're being honest. I mean, I love different aspects of transportation, whether it's walking, biking, running, scooters may be one of them, but let's be honest, they're cool and they're fun, but we're losing money from them and people are getting hurt. So is there a better way to get to point A to point B? I'm not sure, but if, if we're being honest and we're really going to have this conversation to make these scooters work, the conversation's to invest in the urban core because as we spread Omaha out west, the possibility of a scooter program that's going to work and help businesses thrive just isn't going to be there. So it's just a novelty to me right now and it's a novelty that's coming at a loss to the city. So I'm glad we laid this over. I do as well have questions and hopefully I'll get them answered in the next week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to add, when I was talking, I didn't really make the actual motion even though you took it as such, but so I really, what my motion was going to be was to lay it over a week and to continue the public hearing. Again, I think having showed up on the supplemental agenda, I don't know that, I would like to offer the public an opportunity to be able to come and voice their opinion if they so desire. So that was my motion, was to lay it over for a week and to continue the public comment.
Okay. Councilmember Melton, are you okay with that for your second?
Yes.
No further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Non-action items, items 38 through 52, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:42.